There we go. So everyone is muted at the moment, but it's just to ensure that we have good quality during the during this session. So we definitely want to hear from you. So to ask a question, or if you have a comment that you want to make or share an experience here in Zoom. If you just take your cursor and you hover it along the bottom, you'll see the little chat box. So just type in your comment or your question. We'll keep an eye on it throughout the session and just unmute yourself to talk. So and if Gordon Kelsey haven't unmuted themselves yet, we'll all ask you to do that. And then just the last thing I say before I turn it over to Gordon Kelsey and introduce them very quickly. If you like, we just invite you to change your name. If you haven't done so already, your name or your identifier, just to let us know what municipality you are with. So if you look at the my little picture and at the bottom it says Debbie at NSFM. So you just have to hover your cursor over that. The drop down box will happen and just rename. We just want to know what municipality you're from. So that's the end of our presentation, so to speak. No more PowerPoint. So I'm going to close that down. And I just want to introduce our two hosts or facilitators today. So we have Gord Tate and Gord is with the District of Chester. And he is also the Chair of NSFM's AT Committee. And we also have Kelsey Lane and Kelsey's with the EAC. She heads up the Active Alliance and she too is on our AT Committee. So so without further ado, I'm going to mute myself and I'm going to turn it over to Gord and Kelsey to facilitate the conversation.
Thank you, Deb. Nice to see everyone today. Thanks very much for joining us. I think we have 34 participants on the line right now, which is fantastic. And let's get right into this then. So we've all taken note of the increased demand and participation recently in walking and rolling and use of active transportation. I think that COVID has revealed, or at the very least heightened, the value that we all place on our mobility. And perhaps how our built environments still require some work to be able to fully support our citizens, both recreation and utilitarian needs. So with that in mind and cognizant of the fact that perhaps active transportation has taken a backseat to other priorities. We just wanted to host this conversation today to really spark our thinking and to encourage the readiness of all of us to take part, take advantage of opportunities as they come along, share some of the brilliance of the work that's happening in the province. And also celebrate some of the resilience of all you, the stakeholders in active transportation and of our citizens. And really then think about how do we capitalize on some of the positive behavior choices and changes that we've seen out there on our roadways and trails. So that's just really what we wanted to have a chat about today. And to do that, let's start with a little bit of reflection and share a few stories. And really what we'd like to start hearing from people about right now is just tell us what you're seeing out there. Talk about people. Talk about the numbers of folks that you're seeing participating in active transportation right now. What has changed? Who's out there? What are they doing? What do you think some of their motivations are as well for some of the perhaps the new behaviors they've taken on? And to put that question a little bit differently, what is, what have you been pleasantly surprised by during this period as well? So I open it up to the floor. We'd love to start having a conversation and sharing some of this. So if you would like to unmute yourself, we'll manage just the best we can, but unmute and share your thoughts. And someone will go first.
Hi Gord.
John. Yeah, what do you think of John? Good, thank you.
Well, I've noticed a huge influx of users on the Harvest Moon Trail here in New Minas. Apparently bike sales are through the roof. So this is all great news for us. My personal thoughts are that we just had to keep people indoors long enough before they realized what they were missing with this stuff. But no, in all seriousness, trends in the right direction. And I was reading an interesting article the other day about trying to maintain this momentum. And really use our resources and pour some resources into active transportation right now. It's really the perfect time for it. There's especially with all the other traditional modes of activity kind of being hindered by, you know, a lot of restrictions. This is the one thing that we can really roll with right now.
Intended, right, John?
Yeah.
Great. And I see David, David's iPad, which I think is councillor David Hensby there. So you have your hand raised and we'll go to you next.
Hello, everyone. Hope everyone's enjoying themselves today. Yeah, during, especially during this COVID crisis, I've seen a lot more people, you know, getting out and about, walking in the neighborhoods. But we did have a problem with the province closing down the trails. It was very difficult in my particular area where I got the Salt Marsh Trail, the Atlantic View Trail, the Blueberry Run, as well as the Great Sport Greenway and the Muscat Harbor Trailway. It was very difficult for people to get out and enjoy themselves in what I call a social distance safe environment. People were forced to walk on the local roads, the streets and neighborhoods. And at the rural parts of Halifax, we don't have the luxury sidewalks. And so therefore, there's a lot of concern about that. When the province finally did open up some of the aspects, there were still some closures we had. For instance, a great part of the section Lawrence Town was a part of the Lawrence Town Harbor Coastal Heritage Park and that part of that corridor from West Lawrence Town Road, Lawrence Town Beach is a few kilometers long. In my opinion, that should be taken out of the park designation and left as a trail because it was just forcing people onto the busy 207 highway. So I seen a lot of opportunities through this COVID crisis that pushed active transportation initiatives further. The only thing I would add hope though, down the road is perhaps we should get the province having a federal provincial collaboration in regards to whenever significant roadways are being repaved, that perhaps this should be money designated to help put paved shoulders in rural areas. I know that I have an opportunity right now in Mindville Road, the province is looking at redoing seven kilometers Mindville Road, connecting number seven highway to the 207 highway. It goes to a residential area of Mindville. I'm trying to get the municipality to cost share in some degree, four and a half kilometers through the populated area of the Mindville Road. But right now, that report's going through staff, but it'd be easier if we had a definitive program now. Instead of waiting for changes to come down the road, I understand the federal government is looking at possible amendments to some of its programs to include more AT initiatives, especially for rural Nova Scotia. So I just hope I don't miss out on this one and 20 year opportunity. When you pave a road of that significance, you don't get chances very often. And so we got a strike when the iron is hot. I know down the South Shore, Highway number three was paved with a few places of cooperation with the municipality. I just hope we would have a cooperation across the board and with some incentive from the federal government through its AT infrastructure would make it a lot easier for some of the urban councillors to allow the rural councillors to have some AT in their neighborhoods.
Dave, I want to come back to those notions at the end of this as well. When we get into a conversation about kind of the what next and what do we need to do to sustain some of this positive behavior? So take your points and I agree with them. And we benefited last year for sure with some of the paving work. So we need to put, I agree, we need to put the systems in place to support that.
Kelsey won't like this, but if you have a bicycle registration program going to AT development, it'll go a long way.
That's our next webinar. It's actually going to be, and you have to pick a side before you enter.
Let's hear some more stories from around the province though. Again, I like, I like framing this as what surprised you? What have you been really pleasantly surprised by?
Gordon, not from Argyle here. I just want to say that what surprised me was the number of people of new walkers that I've been seeing on our trails on a, in the, in our neighborhood and around our neighborhood. So people that I have never seen on trails before are out there now and the numbers have increased. So I think people are realizing that the benefits of walking and being outdoors in the natural outdoor spaces where they can freely run after being cooped up, like John said, we need to lock them up to know the benefits. So I think that's a great opportunity for us to continue.
I don't know that locking people up will become public policy, but we can consider that certainly. Anyone else? Any other thoughts on the pleasant surprises here?
It's Natasha.
Yeah.
Hey Natasha. So I'm Natasha and I am from Nova Scotia Health Authority within public health. I live downtown and what I had noticed in April and May was if anybody is aware of the four types of cyclists that we often refer to in this work. We've got the people in the no way, no how. Well, I'm convinced that I saw people who were in the no way, no how category and the interested but concerned. And they were out using the streets and testing out the new segregated or separated bike lanes, testing out whether they could become enthused and confident. And that the reason I say that is because I was seeing parents with small children on their own bikes, not attached to the adult bike. And I don't see that very often downtown. Like it's not common at all, in my opinion. And then also seeing people who were very, that looked like very inexperienced cyclists. They were wobbly, not, you know, they were very kind of unsure about just learning kind of thing. And then having spoken to two people I know, women who have previously declared, there is no way I'm cycling on the street. And they were cycling to work during when things were slow. So I'm seeing that. And then the second thing, I think others have seen this around the province, is with everything closed. And I saw way more men walking, like it's not a number one activity among men. But man, I couldn't believe how many men were out walking with, with a presumed spouse or a female or with friends, like young, there's a lot of young people live down here in their twenties. We see like groups of two or three guys out walking. So that was not normal at all on that.
Sorry Natasha, back to your first example as well, what do you think has emboldened those people to shift, you know, their, their consideration categories? And maybe more specifically, what is, what changed in their environment that facilitated?
Well, certainly the drastic drop in vehicle traffic. Yeah.
Yeah, I've certainly noted that around my home as well. So not to pick on vehicles, but there's obviously an element of safety, real and perceived safety that has facilitated that for folks as well.
Yeah. And I think, you know, it's, it's not always just that direct as well. Like I think probably people's regular activities were halted. So if somebody spends their leisure time outside of work and school, going to a facility of some sort and they can't, then they're going to look for alternative activities.
Right. Thanks Natasha. Anyone else have any thoughts on this, what you've been pleasantly surprised by?
Hey there. It's a, so I just wanted to comment on, on our trail use in town of Berwick and kind of on the Kings County area in general. So all of, all of the Kings municipalities are connected through the Harvest Moon Trail, also the old railway bed. So we, we in Berwick, we definitely saw an increase of people that were using the trails while people have been off and going out and getting that exercise. And it was, it was almost kind of nice that COVID hit really before the bug season really started. So the people really got a sense of enjoying those trails before they were swarmed. One thing that, that came up for us specifically in Berwick though, is that where we, where we are a mixed use trail, we had a lot of complaints that were coming in about the number of ATVs that were in use on the trail, especially over the period where Dr. Strang had made his request for ATV users to not be going out and using the trail. Because that was mostly just a request, there wasn't really any form of like legislation that we could use to really try and encourage people not to use the trail past what was not a, not a health order, but rather a health request. So we had increased, increased bikers and increased walkers on our trail, but also with an increased risk of ATV use. I'll, I'll give an example of my own going out with my wife and my son on the trail. My son has just turned three and he's at that stage that we still take the stroller sometimes, sometimes we don't. But just as a safety, if we're going for a longer walk, it's a place where he can get a little bit of rest. So we're walking along the trails. We ran into another mom from his daycare who also had a stroller and her daughter was walking behind her. We stayed about 12 feet apart and we chatted for about five minutes. And there was an ATV that was coming along, probably about full speed along the trail. So we, of course, we pulled the kids to either side of the trail and we were hoping that the ATV would slow down. He still wasn't slowing down. So we had to anchor our, our, our stroller into the middle of the path to try and get this ATV to get the idea to slow down. And so he did, he did eventually slow down and there were some dirty looks that were exchanged on all sides. But that was, that was definitely a challenge for us is that, you know, as a young family trying to go out and get that sort of active participation. A lot of the funding to maintain our trails really come through the ATV and, and snowmobile clubs. So in terms of putting out any messaging that we would prefer them not to be using the trail, it was a very big challenge for us. And certainly now, it was one of those things because our council and none of the councils really received any warning when the, when trails and parks were being opened up. By the time that our council had had that debate about what we should do, the next day, the announcement came out saying, oh, all trails and parks are open now.
Yeah, so to just wrap that, so yeah, we've all been in that situation. It's been a challenge and there's certainly been many overtures made to the province. But what I just to kind of summarize everything I've been hearing so far is that COVID, if nothing else, has reinforced and validated the key pieces that lead to participation in active transportation being the environment that we work in, whether it's an ATV environment or a car shared use environment, that COVID has created greater demand on limited resources perhaps as well. So more people coming into the same spaces. But then also kind of, you know, necessity is the mother of invention. So the fact that we've been cooped up and we've needed this outlet has created that greater demand as well. So I summarize it that way, just to think that there's a little bit of lightning in a bottle here that we should try to, to capture as well. So last chance for kind of a pleasant surprise story, if anyone wants to put their hand up or offer that right now.
Yeah, I don't know if you saw my little chat there, but it was also little treasures that people leaving on the trails. A lot of painted rocks and stuff. It really got the families out there for kids to have fun and looking for discoveries. We're having kids paint little things and leave things behind for others to find. I found that was a nice attribute as well as all the, the covering a bloom of all the people taking pictures and stuff of the nature coming into its splendor. That was nice to see on Facebook.
That's a nice point, Dave. Thanks. And yeah, we're seeing that all over the place as well. So I sum that up as this building of greater community, that everyone is finding their place in these facilities, trails, bike paths, whatever they might be. But it's becoming a common experience, a shared experience for more and more people. And that's really important, I think, as we consider how do we capitalize on this.
Deb, yeah. Sorry, we just have a comment in the chat box from Fran. She's in Lockport. She's having trouble with her microphone. But she said that she's been pleased to see an increasing number of youth on the trails and discovering that bicycles are a great way to get around.
Yeah. Thank you, Fran. Yeah, I can echo that as well and seeing more families doing things that I hadn't seen before as well. We started to touch on these and I certainly don't want to dwell on the negative aspect of this, but it's important to identify some of the challenges so we can think about how do we overcome them. So David, you highlighted a few challenges when it comes to planning and, and funding. Ty, you highlighted your experience or challenges there, but what else should we be thinking about when we think about not just the challenges, but how do we start to overcome those as well? Is there anything out there percolating that we want to talk about?
Well, if we're talking, are we just talking about our rails, trails corridors, or we're talking about AT in general across rural Nova Scotia?
We're talking about promotion of active transportation, whether it be on trails or roadways. And we're talking about planning for active transportation in the future as well.
Well, I still stress the bicycle Nova Scotia Blue Route should be first and foremost across the province. Push the province, push the federal government to those kinds of things, you know. And here in Halifax, where we got a few million dollars for a AAA bike network, I think we need to have that AAA bike network across the province. And the blue route is the first word, first place to start.
I cannot see if anyone from the Blue Route is on the call right now, but I'm sure that does appreciate your comment, David. Anyone else have anything thinking, that they're thinking about?
And maybe while we're waiting to, I can just kind of draw attention to the survey that we conducted as well, through the Active Alliance and just kind of some of the responses in terms of that question that you had, Gord. And kind of what were some of the challenges in this moment of COVID for active transportation? And obviously you can see that funding, funding has been a challenge, but there's also barriers not related to funding such as council direction and limited communication and capacity between staff. I just wanted to take this moment to thank everyone who filled out this survey. We received results from across the province and it has really helped inform this discussion and also inform a broader conversation around this topic.
Kelsey, would this information be provided to, for instance, of various councils in an information report or a letter to council to advise us of this input?
We haven't chatted about that yet, to be quite honest, David, but I think certainly we can make it publicly available, the final results, once they're all allied and calculated.
And at the end of this, Kelsey will invite everyone, there's still a chance to submit responses to that. So Kelsey will give you that chance as well, if you haven't taken advantage of that, which leads me into my comment to build on David, your thoughts. Whether, and I agree about the Blue Route absolutely, but beyond the Blue Route as well, thinking about how we build out AT infrastructure across the province. Does anyone have any suggestions on, or thoughts on how we, how do we mobilize ourselves better? How do we galvanize this moment into a real opportunity to push the federal government, push the provincial government perhaps, and push ourselves to really make some lasting changes as a result of this? Taking the conversation a tiny bit different direction here, but does anyone have any thoughts on that right now?
Well, as I said earlier, this COVID crisis has magnified the opportunity for us to utilize our local resources better. You know, having the gym shut down, people found an alternative way to exercise and that was in their own neighborhood streets and everything. So we got to, we got to make a roadmap, basically, of where the most desirable areas to have an AT enhancement done. Like I talked about the Mindville Road, I talked about Highway 207 through Lawrence Town, Chesapeake. I could talk about the Clam Harbor Bay Loop. Those are significant bike roads, very scenic areas. It would, it would also bring eco tourism to those areas. But I think that we need to have a roadmap out there of showing, like I personally believe all our trunk highways, highway number one, two, three, four, all the way up through to 13, whatever, should all have paved shoulders. But will we get there? I really don't know.
I'm going to call, sorry, anyone have any thoughts on that question I just asked? I'd like to call on Eliza. Eliza, you can take a second to introduce yourself, but I know that HRM has been working on some very important work, which you're calling the Mobility Response Program. Eliza, do you want to speak to that just briefly, just to make everyone aware of it? Cause you're doing some really good work there.
For sure. Um, hey, everyone. I'm Eliza and kind of before we started working on the Mobility Response Plan, I was Transportation Demand Management Coordinator, still am with HRM, but have kind of shifted my focus lately to our Halifax Mobility Response. I also have my colleague Alora Wilkinson. She's joined us on the call as well. And so her and I have been kind of working together with, with our manager and our leader to kind of lead the, the Mobility Response for Halifax. So Alora, yeah, feel free to jump in whenever you want. But yeah, so basically kind of recognizing that, you know, transportation needs and behaviors were sort of changing in response to COVID and following a couple of directives and conversations at council, we started working on the Halifax Mobility Response Plan. Think maybe like a month and a half ago now, it's, it's been a bit of a, it's been a bit of a pedal to the metal. So hard to remember how much time we've been in it. But basically with the Mobility Response Plan, we kind of identified four main areas of action. So one of them was, so we kind of categorized those as like spaces. So space to move was one of them. So how do, how do we create space for people to walk, roll and cycle in our streets? Recognizing that some of them are underutilized with decreased traffic levels and that kind of thing. And how can we think about how we use our road space to support transportation for essential workers and for people to get to essential destinations? And then how do we support active transportation more broadly as we look at sort of the reopening period and what that looks like? Also recognizing for us, we have a transit system and there have been impacts to that system because of COVID. So how can we maybe use active transportation to support transportation demand in a time when, you know, transit is maybe not as much an option for folks? And that's partially because we've changed service levels, but that's also because there's a lot of, you know, we think kind of going, going forward, there might be some resistance to coming back to transit just based on physical distancing and that kind of stuff. So yeah, spaces to move, spaces to queue. So recognizing that people are with physical distancing, are having to like line up outside of businesses and that kind of thing to wait to enter. So how do we create space for that on our sidewalks without making it unsafe or making it impossible for people to physically distance? Space to load. So recognizing that businesses are doing a lot more like takeout and curbside pickup. How do we use that curbside space a little bit differently than just like all day parking or whatever to create loading spaces? And then the last one is space to support business. And so one of the things that we just did this past week was just close Argyle Street, which was a street that was designed and streetscaped recently. And it was kind of designed to be closed on a more regular basis. But on Friday, we just kind of closed it for good until the end of September. So that's a shared street, lots of patios, lots of businesses. So the hope is to kind of open up more space for, for them to be on the street and also just more space for people to walk and, and be on that street as well. So, but probably more of interest to the folks here for our space to move. So creating more space for people to walk, roll and cycle. Some of the things that we've done in some of our commercial areas, like Spring Garden Road and Queen Pool Road, we've expanded the sidewalks temporarily with temporary materials. So we've kind of, I don't know if we've effectively doubled the sidewalk space, but we've added more space so people can safely physical distance while walking down the streets, especially on those crowded, more crowded areas where we have a lot of people trying to access essential destinations and now businesses. A couple of weeks ago, we rolled out 12 kilometers of slow streets. So basically we took a bunch of streets that we had identified in our integrated mobility plan as future local street bikeways. And we shut them down to all but local traffic. And with the idea of kind of calming them and reducing vehicle volumes and vehicle speeds to make it more comfortable for people to walk and cycle. So if people have to step off the sidewalk to get around someone else, they can do that on a street that's a lot more calm. And it's also a lot more calm for people to bike. So we use the local street bikeway network or the proposed one from the IMP. So as a lot of those routes are kind of identified because of the sort of spines they provide through neighborhoods, but also their connection to some essential destinations and to our more commercial areas or other like spaces where we have lots of businesses. And yeah, so that's really great. And we've had a lot of really great feedback on the Slow Streets project so far. So we're hoping to roll out some more kind of in the coming weeks. But we're also looking for opportunities to use our tactical urbanism program, which is more Alora's wheelhouse to look at how we can do some more kind of lighter, quicker, cheaper cycling facilities to support that as well. So Alora, I don't know if you want to speak, sorry, there's, there's a lot.
Before transitioning to that, I will just add about the slow streets, that one of the really great things about using the IMP network and kind of those streets that have already been identified as lines on a map was that we could, with some confidence, roll those out pretty quickly without any public engagement, because there's been a lot of conversation around those leading up to this point. We've now created an online forum to collect information from the public, asking for, you know, where are they seeing other streets that had? asking for, you know, where are they seeing other streets that had issues and trying to collect some of that information in a crowdsourcing way, because I'm sure as you guys are kind of indicating, like, things are changing so quickly, people's transportation habits, how they're moving, where they're going, when they're going is all really kind of unknown and changes month to month with every new ease of restriction. So going to the public was really important to help us understand these areas that maybe, you know, we're not walking down every single day. So we're looking at as our kind of next phases of rollout, kind of expanding outside of these, these routes on a map further throughout our municipalities, so that we can start to address some of those areas using the same principles as the local street bikeways and that criteria. And then for the kind of the pop-up bikeways, we over the last year have been working on a tactical urbanism program that's been under development. So we've kind of pivoted our focus from that to look at some of the kind of AT corridors in our minimum grid to support our active transportation team members in trying to get as many of these out in the next little while, looking at using some more temporary measures, more conversations around paint and kind of like construction barrels, rather than necessarily going all the way to our usual tactical measures, which are more precast curbs and designed to be out a little bit more, so looking at how we can respond within, you know, times of weeks, not months, and then also considering what we can do as we transition from summer into fall and having those conversations about how do we continue to try some of these things and move that piece forward. And so that piece is really kind of under development still, and we're hoping in the next few weeks that we can, can roll some out. But obviously, those, those pieces of infrastructure are a little bit more complicated and take a little bit more time to develop than, than the Slow Streets.
Thanks, Alora, and thanks, Eliza. And you've alluded to this, but I just wanted to pride this a little bit. How much of the Mobility Response work was pure reaction to COVID? And how much of it were you already preparing? How much was it? Eliza, any thoughts?
Yeah, so so I guess basically, you know, kind of what we've put on the street so far, for the most part, has been built on plans that we had for more permanent changes. So for example, we added temporary expanded sidewalks on Spring Garden Road, but that was part of a a long-term streetscaping process that's been going on for a couple of years and Alora is leading that project. So a lot of what we've, what we've put on the street so far is kind of building on existing plans or programs or initiatives, but just doing it in a temporary way. So yeah, those plans that we've had were really, were really helpful for us to kind of move forward without a lot of engagement and without a lot of kind of asking for feedback before we did something, because a lot of those plans and projects have already been vetted by the, you know, like we've done in community engagement on them. So most of it is based on existing programs and we highlighted that as a kind of a focus from the beginning, because we wanted to, we saw it as an opportunity to build on what we were already trying to do in the long term anyway. And so could we do it in the short term with temporary materials? And that also kind of helped us test some of the things that we wanted to do in the long term or look at how we can transition from that temporary to the more permanent. So yeah, but I think as we move forward, there's a little bit of, as Alorix alluded to, kind of expanding our scope and looking at how we make connections that maybe we weren't planning for before. So how do we connect to some of the more suburban communities that relied a lot on transit? And maybe that's not as much of an option now, maybe we didn't really have a plan for that, but you know, there's kind of a need or a demand that exists there. So a lot of what we did in the short term was really just based on existing plans and programs. But now that we have some time, I think we're looking at, you know, where do we, what can we do to kind of meet demands that may not have been there before?
Okay, so give me, I'm going, I'm going somewhere with this, so trust me. Give me three words that describe tactical urbanism.
Um, okay. Cheaper, well, I can use the ones that are always there, cheaper, quicker, and more streamlined.
More streamlined?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we take those three, quicker, cheaper and more streamlined, it's the three hallmarks of tactical urbanism. My challenge to everyone else on the call, or many of you on the call, is how do we think about tactical ruralism? Do you where I'm going with that? How do we do things in rural communities, which many of us live in, we have a lot to learn from HRM in other cities? But how do we do things quicker, cheaper and more streamlined? If you, if any of you have a, thank you Natasha for your clapping hands. So if any of you have an answer to that right now, if you want to share a thought, please do.
Do we have an advanced capital program from the province regardless of local road recapitalization? I know they have the five-year highway plan, they talk with the big structures, but they don't give us this, the, the, the short-term immediate plans for the upcoming year or next year. If we had an opportunity to know that in advance and that there's ways to enhance that with a possible AT component, it'd be great if we could pre-plan for that and try and find money for it. But I find we get notice of these paving contracts, you're, it happens through the fiscal year. So I find it very difficult for us to respond adequately to these opportunities that come before us. So I just wish the MLAs in the province would give us a heads up of, you know, a street index or possible political preference idea of where they want to pave next, but if we could capitalize and jump on those opportunities, then why not?
Yeah, and just to add to your point, Dave, it's often those local roads where the best AT opportunities exist as well, right?
No, sorry, I might have a little bit of a delay here, but one of the things I find with tactical urbanism and kind of in my experience trying to build this program over the last year, you know, a lot of the conversations always around the materials that you use, which is definitely an important part and I think is something that in rural contexts needs to have some thought into what, to what works in that environment. But something that I find doesn't get talked about as much that I think is really important, especially from a municipality standpoint, when you're rolling these out, is the process behind it. Because that's the piece that, you know, it takes a lot of work, it's been really helpful to us to roll things out kind of faster now. But they take a lot of conversations and to David's point, like having those relationships built with, you know, external stakeholders as well as internal stakeholders to figure out where's the best use and trying to get ahead of the pavers is something we say all the time. So our tactical projects are trying to, to make those changes before we know a roadworks project is coming, so test some of that stuff. And so I think thinking about the process of who do you need to have on board? Who's going to help you review, design, make these changes? Who do you need to talk to is a really important piece of tactical urbanism and setting up that process so that you can move quickly and make sure that you're being really efficient in your time is, is really, really important, because it's not just cheap materials that you can throw down. Anything and whether you're dealing with urban streets, rural streets, doesn't matter who owns it, there's a liability that goes around that. So you need to have a really strong understanding of what you're trying to do and how, and make sure you can get that buy-in as you're talking with these programs, because then you'll have a lot more success in the future as you want to try to roll out individual projects.
I agree, Alora, and just echo both of you as well. Their cooperation, those relationships, the partnerships, they do happen to some degree in the province, but they're very much based on individual relationships and not institutional relationships. And again, echo Dave, I think that's my preference, that's where I think we move, need to move towards, so we can get ahead of the pavers and be more strategic and smart about all this work as well.
I think just kind of to that point too, like, you know, I think collaboration is really important, but there's also, I think, a culture piece of, of getting people okay with trying some of these things and, you know, recognizing that mistakes will be made. And kind of how do you build on your approach over time? So I think sometimes with like piloting things or doing temporary things, there's kind of, we apply, you know, the same level of rigor and process to a temporary installation that we might do for a permanent installation. And then at that point, you might as well just kind of do the permanent one. So I think there's also a balance of like, how do you, how do you establish sort of what the minimum or maximum level of, of comfort that needs to be achieved? To kind of get something on the street and try it and add to it if it needs to. But yeah, making sure the process isn't so unwieldy that it takes like two years to do, you know, a tactical urban project, like, yeah. Or, you know, it kind of, there's years and years of process when, when really it's meant to kind of be tried and built on and that kind of thing.
Gorb, can I expand upon your institutional comment in regards to if we have an opportunity to lobby the federal government about, you know, sustainability opportunities and active transportation as a component of these green initiatives? They were trying to fund like electric buses and public transit. Let's, let's try to, let's try to include active transportation as part of that infrastructure. We have nine of the 11 MPs that serve rural Nova Scotia. We need to stress with our MPs the need for a federal component to encourage the provincial municipalities to partner on AT's rural solutions. And I think we need to examine that. We have Andy Fillmore, one of those two urban MPs, has been charged and tasked with the, the task of, of an active transportation in the National Trail Strategy. So I think we need to bring Andy on board and say that how can we augment that strategy? Because a lot of those active transportation trail strategies is outside the urban core. So, you know, our rails, trails go from South Shore to North Shore and then, and then towards the valley. So I think we need to see how we can mold that program with our federal components.
So Dave, I'll throw in a strategic comment here. I know that Andy is aware of these conversations and he's supportive, but we need to marshal everyone on this call and leaders like you, Dave, to put weight behind this need. And that's all I'll say.
So Andrea Parker here, I'm a Community Health Board Coordinator in the West Hans area in Cobicwet, so Sackville and surrounding areas. And the community health boards do advocacy and they use a population health approach and there's 37 across the province. And we are very well linked in together, all the coordinators and boards. So, you know, I would start with, you know, if you want everybody on board with this, reach out to the community health boards, because they're made up of volunteers from across Nova Scotia and they're rural and urban focused.
And Andrea, what do the, what do the community health boards need to be, to be ready to receive the, the message? You know, do you know what I mean? Like, can't call, cold call a community health board and say, hey, get behind this AT thing. They need to be ready to receive that and be aware of the benefits and all those good things. Do you have any advice when it comes to that?
So we have a structure, like we have a director, but I mean, if you sent something to me to start, then I can send that to my manager and send it around and it can happen in a very short period of time. So, you know, I can do like the, the warm introduction if you need something like that.
And how have community health boards kind of processed the impact of COVID when it comes to active transportation, participation in recreation, those kinds of things? What, where is the conversation within, within the health boards right now when it comes to this?
Um, so there hasn't been much conversation. Either the boards I support haven't been talking about active transportation at all. They have continued to meet virtually though. So that is one positive, that they still are functioning.
So, yeah, more relationships, the better, for sure.
Yeah, and I do want to take it back a little bit, if that's okay, just to follow up on Eliza and Alora's comments outside of HRM to get a sense of what's happening across the province. Have, have any other community attempted kind of the tactical stuff or what are some of the measures that you've taken as a response to COVID related to?
I just wanted to share this slide from Kelsey's survey work. Let me push buttons here. So question three on that survey asked, did your community have AT projects planned for this year that are being postponed due to the impacts of COVID? And when this was shared with me, what stood out to me right away was about 53% of the respondents said yes. That seemed like a really high number to me. And I saw it as a positive, meaning that there's stuff that was in the hopper, ready to go. And then we've had to pull back from that for one reason or another, likely budgets, perhaps staff capacity to implement some of the projects as well. And then a smaller percentage said that, no, we weren't impacted by it. But in that, I mean, that could be taken as disappointing news, but I also see as an opportunity as well. So again, when we think about funding and marshaling support and all those things, it suggests to me that we're ready to make a bit of a leap in this province and we just need all the pieces in, in play to be able to do that. Does that spark any thinking for anyone? Is there any reflections on that? Sorry, Kelsey, I had something to add there too.
No, I was just gonna say, that's a great, that's a great question, Gorb. And also there's a follow-up question, just to your point about how this might be positive, is that we asked whether or not your community had a shovel-ready or shovel-worthy AT project and the response rates were very similar to this with a little bit more unsure, but about 50% of you said that you did have projects that were just, were waiting on funding that were ready to go. So yeah, just leaving that there and, and seeing what's up.
And I'll continue to hammer the, the notion of readiness. It comes up in a couple of the comments here, like, we have some good ideas that could call them shovel-ready. But shovel-ready when is not necessarily shovel-ready unless you've got some of those engineering drawings done and those kinds of things. So again, I'm just putting it there to, to reinforce the idea that the more we can be ready for opportunities, the more likely we'll be able to take advantage of those opportunities. Sorry, I thought I saw someone with a hand up or something like that. Anything coming up in the chat box we should be looking at here, Deb?
Yeah, Gorb, we have a few actually. So Gillian from the municipality of Yarmouth was talking about the importance of recreation and just see, yeah, the general importance of recreation and she included a hashtag recreation matters. So, so just during this time, of course, people are realizing the importance of recreation when we've been stuck indoors a lot more often than we have in the past. Hillary from Colchester said it was great to see the town of Banff close three blocks to Banff Avenue to traffic. So we need a new sidewalk spec, wider sidewalks. We also had a comment from Hillary, she said, and she, I think this kind of echoed Dave's earlier comment about coordination between the province and municipalities when doing work plans for repaving projects. And there was one more, I believe.
I think that's from, one more comment from Elaine, just on evaluation and what is the role of evaluation? And is there an opportunity to collect objective data on usage to build the case during COVID?
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, I'm conscious of time, we have about 10 minutes left here. I'm just looking, Karen at FBM, would you mind if I called on you for a second, just to speak to the Main Streets project that we just collaborated on?
Sure, I was, I was thinking whether I should put a chat in there about the role of Main Streets in rural Nova Scotia communities in the context of ATs, so sure.
Just give us a quick overview of the purpose of that project and what we expect from it.
Yeah, we, we've been working on a project for the past few months with the NSFM, yourself, Kelsey, College Action Center, developed Nova Scotia, wide range of organizations, including TIR, realizing some of the issues that transportation brings to Main Streets. But our focus was on looking at rural communities, smaller communities within Nova Scotia and the importance of Main Streets. And we were looking at this before COVID. There's a significant value, an intrinsic value that local Main Streets have, but there's also issues and challenges that they face. And, you know, through, through COVID, we've even realized more, more now, so that the investment in local Main Streets has a significant value and more so than ever before, in fact. And if, if there isn't a better time to invest in local Main Streets, I don't know when we'll find one, but the connection that we found in the crossover with transportation, both active and, and the importance of the road networks in rural communities is, is, is striking. So we developed a toolkit that we, we had worked with a few communities. We worked with Elmsdale, we had engagement sessions with Elmsdale, Westville and St. Peters throughout the province, had some engagement, met with the community, discussed their Main Streets and wanted to develop a toolkit that responds to implementable ideas. Some of these are tactical urbanism or ruralism, I like that one, Gorb, and, and other, other aspects as, as well as dealing with transportation. David's comments about sidewalks, paved shoulders, very significant, because often they, they end in an area where it's almost paramount for people to have that mobility. those mobility attributes. So we just recently published and completed that report. It will be put on the NSFM website for anybody to view. And we're going to continue that work with other communities that might express an interest in, in being part and integrating their main streets as part of a holistic view with active transportation.
Thanks, Karen.
On that point, if I could, Gord, I remember back in the nineteen eighties and nineties and the province used to have the main street program. And it was great for a lot of the local villages across the province to have an enhancement to their village cores. Back then sidewalks were included as a part of the funding project. Now sidewalks are excluded. Look at the Connect Two program now the province has. You can put a greenway in, but you can't put a sidewalk in. To me, AT is AT is AT, no matter if it's greenway or a sidewalk or a paved shoulder, they should all qualify.
I think David was listening in on our call yesterday, Gord.
Perhaps, yes. Yeah, thanks, Dave. Yeah. And that's part of Karen's background and we don't need to get into this, but Karen had a lot of experience with the main streets program in Saskatchewan, right, Dave?
And Alberta.
And Alberta, yeah. All right. I just want to start to wrap this up. All of us could talk about active transportation forever, but we do need to be conscious of time. So when we think again back on this whole conversation and the experience that we've all shared in the last three months or so. And we think about sustaining some of the positive behavior changes. And I know we've touched on this already, but what comes foremost to mind for you in terms of how do we identify the motivations that people have right now? And how do we make sure that they continue to exercise these, these positive choices? And or are any of you already taking this on to some degree? So for example, on the SoShore, from us in Chester down to Natalie in Argyle and Jill in Yarmouth, we're working on a you know, kind of a messaging marketing program to help people sustain that positive behavior. That's one example. But is anyone else working on this across the province and specifically when it comes to active transportation?
Gord, Elaine just wrote in the chat box, community engagement.
Elaine, tell us more. What do you, what do you mean by that?
Sorry, I, I'm just trying to think of how to capitalize on all the current activity. There's, there's a lot of people engaged in walking and cycling activity now. So what are the opportunities to bring them together and have some conversation and engage them in some kind of longer term planning and stuff?
Gotcha. So having, you know, a conversation not dissimilar from this, but on a community level to identify some of those opportunities and what do we do about it? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Also, Gord, Eliza here. So one thing that I've been kind of thinking about from a TDM perspective is, you know, we have a lot of folks who are working from home, which is like one thing that, you know, we have kind of been pushing for from a sustainable transportation perspective to be like, you know, what if we incorporate incorporated more of this? And, and then, you know, March, whatever fifteenth hit and we all had to just, just do it and get used to it and make it work. So yeah, I guess I'm kind of interested, you know, thinking about reopening. You know, how are some of the major employers approaching, kind of going back and, you know, is it a, you know, work from home, flex work kind of situation? And, and how does it, like, how has COVID kind of changed the nature of work and how we think about presenteeism and that kind of thing? Or even just like work hours and, and all that stuff. So I think, you know, at the at a workshop, I think Kelsey hosted a while ago around the Art of City building, I think it was. We, you know, the Active Alliance had a meeting or a little workshop and one conversation we talked about a lot was nature of work and, and how that really impacts people's transportation choices. And so I think you know, we've kind of been forced to accept a new normal. And how do we engage with our major employers and, you know, ourselves as government employees to think about how we can kind of sustain some of these things in a way that allows people to think about different transportation choices for commuting or working from home to kind of limit the number of commutes that they do in a week. So that's, that's one thing I've been kind of thinking about.
Excellent.
Another thing that I just want to kind of pull what Eliza just said and that idea around community engagement together. I think something that our larger teams have been kind of talking about and wrapping their head around is like, how do we, how do we keep this really a story going to help us as we move forward? And I think that story piece is really important because data is really hard to come by, you know, in Halifax, we have some, some points that have regular data. I guess data points that we can pull from things like the bridges that help us understand where vehicles are and those travel patterns, but it's really hard in this kind of world to find anything very tangible and it's changing and it's different everywhere. So data isn't, it's nice to have when you have it, but it's not something that we can really rely on at this point. However, I think a lot of anecdotal stories, whether it's social media, whether it's conversations with people, like there's those perceptions are shifting around how we get around in our town and what people experience, you know, there's conversations happening in the suburbs and people are out of their cars, walking and they're, they're realizing that the roads aren't designed for, for what they need now. So how do we document that? So that it's not just data, but we keep those stories so that we can keep telling that story and remind people, once this is kind of behind us, what they thought at this time and what they wanted and what they experienced and what they felt so that we can use that and have those conversations in the future as well.
So Dave, I'll get to you just as I, I'll put a challenge out to all my recreation colleagues on the line here as well to start to do some of that, you know. Empowers, I think are positioned really well to do that kind of work. We've done a little bit on the SoShore and ask people that we've seen out there walking and biking more with their families, what have you, why are you doing more? What have you realized during this? And then publishing that kind of stuff too. So something we can do. Dave, you have your hand up and then we'll wrap this up.
One statistical opportunity we have for Halifax is why don't we check all the police tickets that were written during the COVID ban in regards to not respecting social distancing, the parks and trails. If we can have an idea where the tickets were issued, be it at the trailhead parking lots or the beaches or the parks, we know people are out there doing active transportation exercises. So I think we have a statistical opportunity there to see where those tickets were issued.
I like how you just found the silver lining in getting a ticket, Dave. Good job. Okay, Kelsey, last thought or word?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say and wrap up. Thank you so much for everyone that participated. We had almost forty participants, which is pretty incredible turnout. And also just to say that the, the survey will be closing in a couple of days. So as Gord mentioned, please fill that out if you haven't already. And I see Gord, you're, you're pulling up the Active Alliance website. We did have someone taking minutes here so we can kind of share back the key themes and also try to consolidate some of the information so that you have that at your fingertips for this next phase, which we've kind of alluded to, but it's it's that next piece of like, how do we mobilize? How do we kind of make sure that active transportation is a really strong point in this next funding.
Thank you, Kelsey. Yes. And like I said a few minutes ago, I could talk about this stuff all day. But let's promise to have another chat again in the future and continue to stay connected and continue to do the great work that everyone is doing across the province. Because little by little, we're getting to a really, really good place. So thank you very much, everyone. Okay.
Happy trails.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for hosting, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.